All right. Good evening, everyone. I said, "Good evening, everyone." There we go. Act like it's a room full of people now. Act like it's a room full of people. Thank y'all so much for coming out tonight. We have some very special people in the room. Not talking about the council, but I'm talking about the youth council. And we're glad to have you all here and excited for everybody to be here on tonight. We're gonna go ahead and call this meeting to order. We'll have the invocation by Chaplain Hugo O'Paisa.
Let's pray. God, thank you for letting us be gathering your name in this place. Thank you for your love. Thank you for everything you've done for us. We recognize that without you, we cannot do nothing, God. That's why we're asking you tonight to give wisdom and to give guidance to these honorable members of the city council to make the decisions on behalf of our community. In the name of Jesus, we're asking you that, and we glorify your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Mr. Hugo, for that wonderful prayer. Good to see you as well. All right, everybody should have a copy of the agenda for tonight. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting held on April 9th, 2024?
So moved.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. No employee recognitions, no public hearings. We are down to petitions and communications. Authorized Mayor Pro Tem to cast ballot for GMA's District Four officers.
Yes, sir. We discussed this morning in our work session, and we need council to authorize the mayor to submit the ballot on behalf of the City of LaGrange for the GMA District Four officers.
Motion to authorize mayor, Pro Tem mayor.
Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? And it passes. Down to reports. City manager.
Yes, sir. Before I get started, just want to share something with you, or receive the call yesterday from one of our citizens that lives on Polly Lane, who had been in the yard working and fell with their wheelbarrow and couldn't get up, and was laying there for about 30 minutes until our sanitation crew came by. And just wanted to give them a shout out because they helped him up, got him to the house until the medical care could come and take care of him. So he took the time, the citizen took the time to call me and wanted me to be sure that Ginger Garrett, Ladaria Strozier, and Tucker Arrington were recognized for jumping in there and helping him out in a really bad situation.
That's good stuff.
And the second item on the list is, we would like the motion to authorize the Mayor Pro Tem to execute an agreement to purchase property for Section 10 of the thread.
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Very good. And last item we've got on the list is, as we went over this morning, the city's annual audit, also known as the annual comprehensive financial report, was presented. We'd like the motion to accept that audit for the year.
Motion to approve. Second.
All right. Have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Passes unanimously. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Patrick.
Appreciate it.
All right. Resolutions. Approve revisions to personnel policy.
Yes, sir. As we discussed again this morning in the work session, draft personnel policy is before you for approval, which would allow for employees to give fellow employees shared leave in time of health crisis in their lives or their immediate family's lives. So they've got excess sick time that they would like to donate to a fellow employee that's suffering a bad situation. So that policy is before you for consideration.
And sick pay policy as well.
And a change to the sick pay to accommodate that. That's correct.
I'd like to take the time to make a motion to approve that.
All right. Have a motion and a second.
Discussion?
Discussion?
Yeah. I just want to say, number one, thank you to all the city employees who brought this to your attention.
Yes, sir.
And number two, thank you guys so much for taking the time to research this, to change it, and not only change the policy, but the very fact that you can change people's lives and make a very troubling time a little bit easier. And I know it wasn't easy for you guys to chase all these leads down, so thank you so very much. And on behalf of the employees, I want them to know that they have a leadership group here that cares immensely about their families. So thank you.
Yes, sir. And council as well.
Awesome. Awesome. So motion and second, and discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thanks, sir.
No first reading of ordinances. Second reading of ordinances. We have the naming of Lakeland Drive.
The ordinance of the Mayor Council and the City of LaGrange to amend the code in the city, to amend the code so as to name a certain street in Highland Park subdivision as Lakeland Drive, to repeal conflicting ordinances, fix an effective date, and for other purposes.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Board and agency appointments. We have the visit LaGrange board to fill the unexpired term of Chase Hudson to Jason Weldon.
Mr. Mayor Pro Tem, I'd like to make a motion that we approve Jason Weldon to approve the unexpired term of Chase Hudson.
Is he here today?
I'd like to second that motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second next to this. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Any opposed? All right. Passes unanimously. Delegations. Our special guest tonight, LaGrange Youth Council.
Mayor Pro Tem and council, I am honored to be an advisor for the LaGrange Youth Council. This year's group is a particularly impressive set of juniors and seniors who live throughout our community. They represent seven different schools, including LaGrange High, Trup High, Callaway High, LaGrange Academy, Springwood School, Lafayette Christian, and Home School. This year's youth council is also the most diverse group that we've had yet, which is something we are particularly proud of and excited about to better represent the demographics in our city. To tell you more about what the youth council has accomplished this year, I'd like to invite Youth Council Chairperson Alyssa Lee to come to the podium.
Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and City Council. My name is Alyssa Lee. I'm a senior at LaGrange High School this year, and I'm honored to be the 2023-2024 LaGrange Youth Council Chairperson. I'd like to share a little bit about what we did this year. As always, we had a variety of presentations from different departments within the city and also with one of our state representatives, Ms. Debbie Buckner. This included presentations from the Police and Fire Department, the Department of Public Health, Accounting, Marketing, Communications, IT Utilities, and our city planner. Every presentation was a wonderful way for our youth council members to learn a little bit more about how the city government functions and the role of the city government in our daily lives. We also continue to host our yearly ice skating and pizza night with the West Georgia Star, which is one of my favorite parts about the LaGrange Youth Council. Additionally, we took our yearly trip to the Capitol and spoke with House Representative Van Smith and sat in on both House and Senate sessions. However, we had some very special events this year. In October, we hosted the GMA Youth Symposium with over 15 youth councils attending and participating in leadership activities, youth council reports, and skill-building workshops at Great Wolf Lodge. I'd like to thank everyone involved in making it happen. Several youth council members were also involved in volunteering at the first-ever Mayor's Christmas Ball in December that former Mayor Edmondson created. Many of our members are also currently in the process for applying for the scholarship that was created with the funds we collected that night. I'd like to take a moment of silence to honor former Mayor Edmondson and all he's done to promote access to higher education in LaGrange. In February, myself, Alyssa Parker, our vice chair, and Charlie Reed, our secretary, participated in the GMA Youth Forum. It was a great opportunity to interact with other youth councils and learn more about what they do in their communities to target the problems that they see. We also listened to presentations from many people involved in the state government and also the government of the city of Atlanta. For the past two years, the LaGrange Youth Council has been a valuable and integral part of my high school experience and has even influenced my career plans. I truly believe that it is a valuable asset to high schoolers in the city of LaGrange and a great opportunity to get involved with the community and learn more about the city government. I appreciate everything that our advisors have done to get our members the best experiences, the best information, and to make our ideas happen. I'd like to now pass it on to our literacy committee chair, Mackenzie Aldridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Alyssa. Good evening. My name is Mackenzie Aldridge, and I'm also a senior at LaGrange High School. I'm honored to address you tonight as one of the committee chairs for the LaGrange Youth Council this past year. Our group worked on a pickleball tournament to raise awareness for literacy in our community. I'm thrilled to report that through our collective efforts, we were able to donate over 200 books to the Jungle Bus, which is an organization dedicated to promoting literacy among young people in LaGrange. Witnessing the community come together to play pickleball for such a great cause was nothing short of inspiration. I'm actually a personal big fan of pickleball, so this is really fun to me. It showcased the power of unity and collective action in addressing pressing issues like literacy in our city. According to the 2023 GMA scores, 39% of third grade students in Trup County are below their grade level in reading. Improving literacy in our youth is so important because it helps support brain development, improves academic success, and even increases one's imagination and creativity. I cannot stress enough the importance of literacy in LaGrange. It is immense opportunities for opening doors through education for future generations. We reflected on the success of our pickleball tournament, and are extremely thankful we were able to put this event together to help our community. Thank y'all so much, and our Prem Kamat is gonna come talk about the International Culture and Diversity Committee.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. I'm Prem Kamat. I am chair of this year's committee centered around diversity and culture. Recognizing that this year's committee, this year's council was extremely diverse, we wanted to emphasize the importance of diversity and draw attention to the many different cultures located right here in LaGrange. We went through many different phases of development when considering what to do as our project, but were drawn back to the LaGrange International Festival and their food booths. Food is an excellent way to share culture as most foods are intertwined with the cultures and histories of locations they derive from. Since good food is something almost everyone can enjoy and relate to, we chose to create a series of short-form TikTok videos of foods of various cultures present around town. This project's aim was meant to both highlight the many cultures present in LaGrange, from the African to the Asian to the South American and beyond, and help foster a positive celebratory environment around diversity in town. Thus, we hope that our videos and project can be a source of inspiration, unity, and appreciation for the citizens of LaGrange. Now, we would like to present to you one of the videos we have made. This one is a Ghanaian dish called Ator by Janaye Johnson and Kalisa Lynch.
The dish below is a Ghanaian dish called Ator. For this cuisine, you'll need green and red plantains, dry fish, six eggs, roasted peanuts, peanut butter, three avocados, red oil, hot peppers, salt, and red onions. This is a recipe that has been around for a very long time and is still made today. Ator serves as a symbol of culture and community in addition to being a source of food. This meal is prepared for birthdays, big celebrations, and rituals. This is not your everyday food. It is celebration food. The history of Ator is deeply ingrained in Ghanaian culinary customs, which in turn reflect regional dietary preferences and agricultural methods. The meal most likely originated in Ghana, a country known for its beautiful agriculture land and numerous crops, including cassava, yams, and plantains. Ator's culinary skills and ingredients have been passed down through families and communities with modifications made according to personal preferences and geographical variations. Ator has developed into a cherished comfort food that also serves as a symbol of Ghanaian cultural identity and heritage over time. Ator continues to be a classical meal that links Ghanaians to their heritage and customs even as the country's food continues to change and adapt to outside influences. Its past demonstrates the Ghanaian people's persistence and inventiveness as well as their profound awareness of the taste and textures of regional ingredients. We hope you found this video helpful and informative. Please leave a like on the video, and thank you so much for watching today.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council, for providing this great program that really makes a difference in the lives of students, who get the opportunity to take part in it. Here is Mr. Adams.
As you can tell, our youth council has been very busy this year, and we are incredibly proud of the work they've done. Now, we would like to honor our youth council seniors who will be going off to college and becoming the future leaders of tomorrow. To our Mayor Pro Tem and council, if you know any upcoming juniors or seniors, I would like to encourage you to hand off an application to them, which we've provided for you. We really think this is an amazing program, and we know it is, and this is a testament to exactly the program that you guys have helped be part of. We also would like to invite you to come next door after the council meeting to a taco bar where you can talk one-on-one with the students and get to know them even better. So, Mayor Pro Tem, if you would please like to come to the front, we would like to give our students a representative key to the city, a certificate of achievement, and take a picture with our Mayor Pro Tem and honor the seniors who have been with us. Okay. Sir? Mackenzie Aldridge. Leila Bailey. Jordan Brock. Zakaya Gray. Zaven Hart. Deja Johnson. Janaye Johnson. Charlie Key. Alyssa Lee. Eric Martinez. Alyssa Parker. Madison Petit. Charlie Reed. Drew Robinson.
I am pretty tall.
And Max Zachary. We give a round of applause for all of our seniors.
Let's give these wonderful youths a round of applause. One more round of applause. You know, the one thing about students, they could be doing anything, but I'm so glad that they have some great guidance and leadership through their parents and through mentors and people in the community who can pour into them and, you know, tell them to make right decisions and guide them in the right way. So I'm extremely proud of y'all. I wish they had youth council when I was in school. Hopefully, we'd have gotten an acceptance. I hope so, at least. But yeah, super, super proud and happy for y'all and cannot wait to see what God does in your life coming forward. So, last question. Go ahead.
Mrs. Lee, I heard you mention the West Georgia Star a while ago. Is that the West Georgia Star of LaGrange Town or?
It used to be the Boys' News Club.
Okay. A Channel Street, same way.
Yes, sir.
Okay. I just didn't know. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Last but not least, we have another delegation, Mr. Tripp Foster.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem and council, for allowing me to be here to speak tonight. I promise to keep this under the 20-minute time limit. It's okay, you can laugh. All right. My name is Tripp Foster, and I've been a lifelong resident of LaGrange, Georgia. I'm proud that my family has invested in businesses here for over 110 years now, so it's safe to say we are vested in this community, we are committed to this community. And approximately 12 years ago, I became the first person in my family to ever run for an elected position and to be elected on the Trup County Commission. That being said, I've tried to set an expectation for my adult children for community service to set, I want us hopefully one day set a legacy of public service that my kids understand that we're not just here to work and make money and, you know, and live. We're here to give back, and there are many ways we can give back, but I've chosen the path of community service to be able to give back through public service, and I'm proud of that, and I hope that it will set an example for the future for my family to continue in that trajectory. That being said, our family is committed to LaGrange, Georgia, and Trup County. I'm here tonight because I want to formally and publicly announce that I am a candidate for Trup County School Board District Six, which is predominantly on the west side of LaGrange and runs all the way down into the West Point, Georgia city limits. I've worked real hard the last four years to go to a lot of meetings, and while I do have a strong working understanding of government boards, having been on some, and Robert's Rules of Order, that has better prepared me and also go into public school meetings and understand where the differences are on that type of board versus a basic, you know, government board, whether it be a city council or be on the county commission. So I want to say that I am committed to that. I heard just moments ago from the LaGrange Youth Council the word literacy. I have been educated more in the last couple of years that that is one of our bigger challenges with our children here in this community is to improve literacy and to get them not just to get to the mark, but to be above that. Because we know if we shoot for the moon, we might not hit it, but we can land on the stars if we set the bar reasonably and high enough. That being said, I have started forming a program. It's a literacy mentorship program. It's unlike any other that we've seen. I have collaborated with some former superintendents that happened to put this on in Kentucky, and it worked, and I'm hoping and praying that when elected, I'll be able to present this to the school board one way or the other and for them to take an earnest look at it and to possibly implement this mentorship program. The key word's mentorship. It's gonna get people from the community, from all walks of life, to come in and not just sit and read a book to a child, but to mentor young people, to help assist us in getting them above what average is. I was told by great educators that by the end of the third grade, most children have learned approximately 80% of what they're gonna learn in reading comprehension. So it is very important that we get them above that, and if for some reason they fall short by the end of the third grade, that we have special programs in place to get them in in the fourth and the fifth grades before we send them off to middle school. Because once they get to middle school, there's a lot of changes. The curriculum gets harder, their bodies and minds start changing, and they start growing, and they start forming their own ideas and opinions, and we can't lose them at that point. We've got to have them ready so that when we send them there, they'll be more apt to graduate and not give up. Unfortunately, when people give up and quit our school system, many kids end up in the prison system because they become somewhat not employable because of different things that have happened in their life, environments, and the fact that they left school and didn't get their education. So as a member of the community running for a school board seat, I want to work with the rest of the school board to see these dreams become a reality, because at the end of the day, it's not about me, it's about this community, and we're not gonna live forever. But people are gonna come from behind us and take our places and the council and the commissions and whatnot, and even on the school board, and we want to have our community ready. That being said, two things lastly. First, I want to say that I'm proud to be able to stand here today, and that as of today, my wife and I have been married 30 years, and she's allowed me to live to this day. So I'm thankful for that, and she has done that, and she's stood by my side all this time and our family, and we wouldn't be what we are today without her. I wish she could have come with me, but she had another commitment at the time. The last thing that I want to convey to this council is that when elected, I want you to know that I will do everything within my constitutional power to work with this board, because I know that the Trup County school system, being an institution with a budget well in excess of $140 million, it is a great financial responsibility, and the biggest responsibility is the souls of over 12,000 students, not to mention over 2,000 employees and every parapro and every person that comes on these campuses each and every day. There's a great responsibility there. From a faith-based perspective, I look at it as a ministry, because some people are pastors of churches, whether it be 20 people or 200 or 2,000. There's a group of 15,000-plus people there, and I look at it as a great responsibility, and if God wills, I'll be elected on May 21st, and I just want you to know that I'll do everything I can to work with you on anything that y'all need from the Trup County school system in the days ahead, and thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you so much, Mr. Foster, for that wonderful presentation. Closing comments. Do we have anything?
Yes, sir. We do. Our good news for tonight is, we're gonna let you know about our annual litter cleanup was on Friday. We were able to pick up six tons of trash from the city, and we've been going strong since 2018. We want to thank our city employees, our mayor and council for allowing us to do this and for inspiring, for Councilman Gaskin, for inspiring "Leaving LaGrange Better Than We Found It," and also to our partners.
We had some youth council help us as well in that.
Yes, we had youth council, y'all. Thank you. And we had a couple of youth council members that were there for us, so thank you for being there, guys. And our partners, West Georgia Technical College, the LaGrange Tripp Chamber of Commerce, and the LaGrange Lions Club. And we're gonna show you the video of what we did.
Good morning, LaGrange!
Good morning!
There we go. That's what I'm talking about.
Thank you for being a part of our annual "Leaving LaGrange Better Than We Found It" litter cleanup event. Go ahead, right now, give yourselves a round of applause for being here. Back in 2018, we decided that we wanted to send a message to the community, that we wanted to make the community a better place, and we were going to lead by example. We shut it down to pick it up. Hundreds of our employees went out into the main thoroughfares of LaGrange to pick up litter. This morning, we once will again shut it down to pick it up.
Today is more than just picking up trash. Today is showing the entire state the love that we have. Do you love LaGrange?
We love LaGrange.
Do you love LaGrange?
We love LaGrange.
Do you love LaGrange?
We love LaGrange.
That's what I'm talking about. Let's let the entire country know how much we really love our city and our community. God bless. God bless all of you. Thank you. We want to thank you all for this wonderful day and helping us leave LaGrange better than we found it.
And we're proud of what we were able to accomplish together. So, yes.
All right, no further comments. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, guys, for coming.